This is a Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting, January 27th, 2020. It is now 5:13. Please excuse the lateness of our starting of this meeting as our last meeting ran late. If you would include that in the minutes, too, that'd be nice. Urban Renewal Agency reserves the right to add or delete any items as needed, change the order of the agenda, and discuss any other business deemed necessary at the time of the meeting. All information for this meeting is available on the city's website under Agency packets and video. You can also watch this on Channel 4 if you wish. If you wish to speak on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance to the door, the council table, that little table back there, and you'll be called to speak during the public comment sections. Section, excuse me. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under Public Hearing, Public Comment will be taken at that time. Kathy, can we do a roll call, please?
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Diane Kooz.
Here.
Rick Mark.
Here.
And Mitch Parsons.
Here.
All right. Do we have any? Thank you. Thank you. Now it is time to hear comments from citizens present. We have Susan Waki standing up, so, and on the list.
I was pretty sure mine was the only name on that list.
Yeah.
Agency Chair Hinton and Agency members, thank you for allowing me to speak. As of a couple weeks ago, I was elected BAMA Board President.
Congratulations.
So that's why I'm here tonight. And I do have a couple of other board members here with me. Our Executive Director was unable to attend tonight, so we wanted to show that we are here and available for questions, if you have any, and just wanted to be present. So thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. We now have minutes of Urban Renewal Agency meetings, regular meetings of October 28th, 2019, November 25th, 2019, and December 9th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting of the minutes listed as October, November, and December.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. And as that passes, we will move down to Agenda Item Number 6. Oh, brother, I can't see today. G4, which is a Special Order of Business and Presentations, and 4 is Economic Development Toolbox Commercial Facade Improvement Loan Request.
Good evening, Chair Hinton and Agency members. Tonight, the first item that we have for you is we have a commercial facade improvement loan request in the amount of $150,000. Staff received an application for this loan late last year, and we had a loan grant committee meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency to review the application. The redacted loan review letter is in your packet. It's for siding, windows, and paint. It's a fairly visible existing business, and it would be a 0% interest loan, as usual, for our facade improvement loan program payable over 10 years. The loan-to-value ratio is all correct and meets the program criteria. This is kind of a classic example of the facade improvement loan. And when we met with the loan committee December of last year, there was a thumbs up to bring it forward to the agency for consideration of this loan. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions, staff? Okay.
Just, so, when the loan review committee reviews the loan, do they know who the applicant is?
No. They're vetted. Do you want to talk a little bit about that process?
Sure. Over the years, we've gone round and round about how and when are we required and what is best practice for confidentiality. Because we're a small town, we want to basically just focus on, does this request meet the program criteria? It's not important who it is, or what their financial situation is, or that they just recognize that this is a good use of dollars for whatever their business. We have talked about being able to publicize all the great things that the loan program can do and has done since 1999, and so we are talking about, when we do the economic development tools, we will be talking with those loan recipients to say, can we talk about, can we do before and after photos and show off, basically, the great things that you have reinvested in your building and are paying back in a revolving way? So, yes, there's a balance there between, basically, protecting the process of you all for decision-making, so that you are basing all decisions just on criteria, and then also being able to tout the successes of the program.
But then, is the committee at least review the balance in the fund and the health of the fund, that sort of thing?
Yes. Staff administers the budget, and it's first come, first served. That's how we've always done it. We have not, I don't think we've run low on funds. I think they tend to revolve. You know, sometimes we have a year where we don't have one at all, like 2019, this particular application. We hadn't had an application in three years. But before that, we had quite a few, maybe three to four. We also have a lot of inquiries, but it doesn't necessarily result in an application. We love to sit down with people and talk about what they want to achieve with their business, and also refer them to the Small Business Development Center where we can't help. And so, we love engaged business owners when we can visit and help support them, but it's hard to predict. Also, you know, we only have a limited number of businesses located in the Urban Renewal District. I can't remember the actual number. I was going to look it up before the meeting, but I, time got away from me, so. You know, it's possible that, it's possible that people take out a loan and pay it off, and then take out another loan, and, you know, some people don't want to take out a loan. It's hard to know exactly how many possible loan applicants we have. And then are they, do they have the right credit rating? Because this is just exactly like a bank loan, except that it's 0% interest and it's public dollars, but we run it just like a commercial lender would.
And we've had, I assume, success on being repaid?
Yes.
In family fashion, it just hasn't been an issue?
Correct. We've, we have not, never had any defaults.
Any more? Any other questions from anyone?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the said facade loan for $150,000.
Second.
Mr. Parsons seconded it. Kathy, in case you didn't catch him. Okay, all those in favor?
Can we do a roll call?
Oh, roll call, because it's money, of course.
Anderson.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Kooz.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, with Allison still at the table, we will go to Item G5, which is Economic Development Toolbox Update and Improve New Forms.
Thank you. So I have with me this evening our Economic Development Coordinator, Jody Mesher. She's here through July with the Rare Americor program. I think we introduced her last year. And one of her assigned projects is to develop the Economic Development Toolbox. So we're off to the races now. This will be the first meeting that we'll have, and then we're just basically going to take small bites from the elephant. So we have time to discuss things and develop the criteria, how you want to see the objectives met with, hopefully, doing more partnerships. So just a little background, let's see. The, in 99, 1999, that feels so long ago, the agency created the facade improvement loan program as a tool to help implement the Taft Community Vision Plan. And then 10 years later, we did a substantial amendment to the Year 2000 Development Plan, or Urban Renewal Plan, and that included an Economic Development Assistance Program as a project category. So that meant that we were able to do economic development assistance. And about four years later, 2012, we presented some options to you all, and you decided to create three new tools in addition to facade improvement loan. And so in 2013, we made available the Local Program Support Grant. We also then made available Business Expansion Loan and Energy Efficiency Loan. And in 2014, you all voted to make additional tool available of Downtown Manager Assistance, which was a two-year pilot project in conjunction and partnership with the Bay Area Merchants' Association. And then, let's see. So we've made $1.8 million available for building improvements in the district, and it's been 45 loans, or a little bit more than that now, in the last 20 years. And so here we are. You all approved in, I think it was 2019, early in the year, to make the entire toolbox available. So what we'd like to do is, Jody and I would like to give you an update on what our plans are, and get some feedback from you, and then ask if you would approve some reformatted tools and a new application form that we think will be easier for people to understand. So, Jody, do you want to elaborate a bit more?
Yes. So the first four tools we're going to be looking at are the tools that have already been approved by Urban Renewal Agency, the Business Expansion Loan, the Local Program Support Grant, the Energy Efficiency Loan, and the Facade Improvement Loan. And pending city council approval of those loans, they'll be combined on the same document, just so when an applicant goes to look through all of the materials, it's more streamlined, and they can just look at what can they apply for, depending on whether they're in the Urban Renewal District or not. And along the same lines, we've reformatted the application form. Instead of having a separate application for each program, it'll just be one form, and they can indicate on the top what program they're actually applying for. So you can see, we reformatted all of the existing tools for consistency, because before they were kind of, went from description to eligibility or finances first. So now they're all in the same order, just for ease of use. So it's the same content, it's just put into more user-friendly mode.
Sense to me.
And Phase 1 of the tools, like I said, we're looking at the four existing tools minus the Downtown Manager Grant, which we'll talk about a little bit later. And then Phase 2, we're going to be looking at the Infrastructure Partners and Pre-Development Assistance for both Urban Renewal and City Council. And then Phase 3, we're going to be looking at city tools for, or city and urban renewal tools for housing, so energy efficiency and facade improvements for residential properties, as well as mixed-use housing and workforce housing. And then Phase 4, we're going to be looking at the Building Rehabilitation Grant for both City Council and Urban Renewal. So that's kind of the timeline of the rest of the next chunk of tools that we'll be moving through.
Any questions?
No, I just wanted to say, thank you. I was one of the people who applied for a residential grant initially, and it was mind-boggling. So I love the concise clarity of this, and it's, you know, constructively, all the same information, very well laid out. I think it's great.
I would second that.
I'd third.
Very nice. Any other questions about these? Would you like a motion to approve your, oh, you have another?
So what, that was just the, what you're doing, right? I mean, you, so are you looking, or are we going to go over this business expansion program, one of these programs as we go? Is that the intent at this time?
We're happy to answer questions on any of the programs, but the programs that you see in the packet that we're asking you to adopt, just the reformatted version, we didn't change any.
Any data?
Any criteria. We just kind of put them in a blender and made them a nice smoothie. So, maybe reverse smoothie.
I was going to say, maybe.
Opposite, opposite, bad analogy.
Strike that, reverse.
Deconstructed smoothie. So, yeah.
Could I then give them that, and that helps? But foolish me, took the time to read them. And so I had some questions, so maybe we don't have to deal with them tonight, but since this was just regurgitated into a format, could we, could, Jody or Allison, could you think about, you know, if we need to make changes on that, on these? If I?
When was the last update?
Well, yeah, because I guess, you know, I'm quite frankly, looking at the Business Expansion Loan, you know, I'm a little confused of why we would charge $300 for a fee on one and $500 on the other, and I'm betting it's the same amount of work on both. The loan amount is the only difference. So that was my question. Is there something different? And knowing cash upfront is cherished, if we had to, I'm more interested in charging a higher interest rate, as we're doing on the larger loan, but do we need the $500, I guess, or $300, or should they both be 500? So that would, that would be just a question I would have.
I think part of the rationale for that was so that the applicant had some skin in the game, and we didn't want to overly burden someone for a lower loan amount, so it was kind of proportional to the loan amount that they were asking for. You're right, in most cases, it's the same amount of work or not. Sometimes it's a lot of work for a lower grant amount than it is for a higher one.
Yeah.
But it just depends on collateral and personal property, and is it a business applying, or is it a person applying? And so there are lots of, I know there are lots of things that go into lending, and I don't know all those answers, or we do it in-house, right? So I think it was more about skin in the game. I can tell you, too, that even though we say there's a certain amount of money and it's non-refundable, in most cases, our loan officer will reimburse or only charge the amounts that were incurred in order to get to a point of decision for that loan. So we technically need to say non-refundable, because if there's time spent processing, and then it ends up not being loaned, then we want to make sure we're covering those costs, but it's, I don't know if that helped.
Yeah, and that's what I would expect, and I'd still come to the same conclusion, that it probably isn't any different in our actual costs. So, you know, I would just look at that and say, is it really? Because we already differentiate with the interest rate, and so we're.
We'll ask our loan officer more about that.
And again, the, you put the caveat up above, that the Business Expansion Program isn't eligible for city until, city, until, or citywide until after May, so that would, okay? The other, can we go to grants?
Sure.
Can we keep looking at grants? I guess, I was going through this, and I thought the Downtown Manager Program was a subset of this, being a grant. I didn't realize that it was a separate entity. It is a separate entity.
Yeah, the Downtown Manager Tool is its own tool.
Okay. Then, I guess what I'm wondering about, in this loan support program, I've come across different opportunities where, you know, I wish you staff, Economic Development, City, had a pool of money, where you could partner with some other entity. And this seemed to fit that until I read the description. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, sharing, you know, for other communities that are looking to help fund a marine, what's this called? Someone working on the coast that, in the marine, Marine Times official workforce sector, trying to add to that, that sector, and working to fund a maritime sector expert coordinated position that begin to align and connect various entities in the sector. The counties put in money, the Oregon Coast Zone Management has put in money, and so I'm wondering, is this, I'm looking to expand the wording in this grant, where when opportunities like this come along, you know, we could, you could do that, or somebody could.
Yeah, I personally think that that sort of a thing would fit in this category. My concern is that this particular local program support grant tool is, you know, we're all here as the agency, talking about the agency tools, and if the agency does partner, then it has to do a proportional share, and so that's usually 18%, because the Urban Renewal Agency is 18%.
Yeah, I'm thinking beyond to where, when this rolls to city, so.
Okay. And we will have that on your agenda at City Council this evening. So it depends on how you want to develop the city tool, and if you're satisfied with the way this one, if you, if you want to recommend some alternate verbiage, or, you know, we're all ears to hear whatever feedback.
And then finally, on energy efficient, I just didn't know what business operations are, you know? Improving building systems is one thing. I have no idea of business operations.
Yeah, we have had one business apply for equipment, and so we would consider equipment as something necessary for operations, whatever it is they're doing in their business. And so if there's a way that maybe they need something that, I don't know, has them make five pizzas instead of one pizza, then that piece of equipment could be more efficient and could be a request for Energy Efficiency Loan.
So we might want to just put some such as equipment.
Such as? Okay.
And then, I guess, looking at facade and going back, facade is rehabilitation versus expansion. Is that, you know, when we looked at the Business Expansion Program?
Mm-hmm.
Very similar, except for.
Yes.
One's rehabilitation, the other's expansion.
Right. Yeah, and, you know, business expansion could be an improvement to a building. Maybe the business doesn't own the building, but they want to expand the business, and so they work out with the property owner, is this okay with you, and that sort of thing. But, yeah, business expansion can also include facade improvement.
I like, I like combining the two, and so we can just keep moving through, so, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions or suggestions? With those suggestions, are we ready to accept the changes?
On a motion to accept the recommended updates, formats, new form, applications?
Thank you.
And, oh, sorry. We would also appreciate if you would be so willing to also authorize staff to make any minor administrative edits. So if we have a typo or something minor, if we don't have to bring that back, that would help.
I'd be more than pleased to include that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Now, we are moving to G6 on the agenda. Economic Development Toolbox Downtown Manager, new BAMA, which is the Bay Area Merchants' Association and their proposal.
Thank you. So the objective tonight is to, basically, we would like to hear some feedback from you all on this proposed use of the Downtown Manager Tool. They did offer five recommendations in their proposal, and, let's see. So the Downtown Manager Tool was created to have a two-year pilot project where the Downtown Manager would work closely with established merchant associations, businesses in the other historic business districts, the Visitor and Convention Bureau Now Explore Lincoln City, and regional economic development agencies, and the Urban Renewal Agency. And the activities could include establishing and organizing shared objectives between the various areas of town, foster positive relationships as a liaison between businesses, property owners, and city departments, market available storefronts, improve the visual impact of the business districts, coordinate district events with business activities. And program, program success would demonstrate to area businesses the benefits they would realize, and they would then be given the opportunity to create a business improvement district, or an economic improvement district, to fund such a position in the future. So the agency, as you know, have made available $28,000 in one year and $28,000 in the next year, and the Bay Area Merchants' Association, who is our partner to, basically, we provide the funding, and they oversee the position and the activities of that position, had felt as though they could be more conservative with the spending and the pacing of those funds. And so the position basically ended up happening over four years instead of two years. So we never have spent more than the two-year pilot project allotted cap of $56,000. And so right now, as it stands, we have about $4,100 left of that original agreed-upon agency tool. So at this point, we do have the proposal from BAMA. There, sorry, five recommendations are in a very concise, two-page proposal, and basically that is, the five recommendations are to assist with, continue assisting economic development in the southern part of Lincoln City through haunted Taft events, through Taft Beach Bingo, through grant writing assistance, oh, I'm sorry, that's what they have accomplished. Haunted Taft, Taft Beach Bingo, grant writing assistance, and then they are, they have increased their membership 40% over the past year. Memberships are $65 each year, if anybody is interested in becoming a BAMA member. And the five recommendations are to continue being an economic development arm for South Lincoln City at a minimum, and then possibly for the whole city as they, their capacity is able. The second recommendation is to work on attraction development and business recruitment. Third recommendation, demonstrate the vitality of Taft's current offerings, so that, again, the Taft Beach Bingo, and then they have a new idea, which they call Sand Dollar Script Money Promotion, which has been done before, I think, in town and in other cities. Recommendation four would be Boots on the Ground Contractor for Lincoln City Economic Development within staffing limitations. And recommendation number five would be to transition BAMA into the Downtown Manager Main Street Oregon Entity for Lincoln City. So as you might remember, City of Lincoln City is the Main Street membership, and that's mostly because we didn't have a permanent downtown manager, we didn't have staffing that was really going to be doing Main Street activities of, you know, checking out which businesses want to expand, or move into a different vacant storefront, or not even a vacant storefront. If there's timing where there doesn't need to be a vacancy in between businesses coming and going, that's even better. So, and these, these were all things that we had talked about with the former, now-retired McMinnville Downtown Manager, and we know how successful McMinnville's program is. So we took her input seriously when we developed the program, and so now that that two-year pilot project is coming to an end, we have this new proposal from BAMA for you all to consider. So we're happy to hear any thoughts and circle back with BAMA, and as you know, BAMA is here, if there's time to.
Hi, thank you, Allison. I have a few. I have a few comments. But my first one is, are you then suggesting, let's say we love all five of these things. We need to talk about it, obviously. But are we, is this also asking for a different, we have, as you mentioned, $4,100 left in that kitty. Is this also suggesting a change in, I mean, like a whole, I don't understand the money part of this.
Yeah, the money part was not part of the proposal. So I think this is like an introductory idea to see if there is any interest. And what we can do is provide your feedback and get more information, or we can work with Bama to flesh out the details, or we can budget money, or we can not do any of that. It's really, you have all, all the options to direct us however you would like.
Okay, thanks. Any comments, questions, ideas? Diane?
Well, I do have a few questions. And that wasn't the goal, to get Bama to get the businesses to support that position down there? Was that part of the goal?
That's what we were all hoping.
Okay.
Yeah, and without doing a feasibility study, it's hard to know at what level it would take for businesses to contribute in order to sustain a position. I mean, what the agency has provided is $28,000 a year for two years. So in one year of a part-time staff position, if you had 28 businesses, they would have to each contribute $1,000 a year. And so do we have businesses that are willing to, do we have 28 businesses, you know, or 56 businesses that are willing to contribute $500 a year? And the membership currently is $65 a year. So to get from $65 to 500 or 1,000, of course, with however many businesses, it's a simple math exercise to figure out that just based on membership, it's not going to work. So what other, what other ways can, can we look at how to create a sustainable position? And yes, we were hoping that Bama would be able to get to a point of knowing how to make it sustainable, but we haven't seen that that has happened. Which is why they're resubmitting a proposal. Yeah, to, I think, basically expand on their role and offer different outcomes. But it's tough to measure, it's tough to measure Downtown Managers dollar for dollar. There are things that we all see and we know. Like, you can tell when, you know, a downtown is healthy and vital and has street trees and people are walking with shopping bags. I mean, we all have the image of a successful downtown in our minds. And so how do you, how do you get that to happen, is a really hard question.
And have we seen the businesses down there with this happening? Has their sales increased due to what they have provided? Do we know that?
We don't, but I can ask Bama. That can be one of our questions that we have them respond to.
I mean, because what they've done, I mean, it's great, but is it, you can put on events and they can happen, but did it really succeed to the point of, did it bring more business down there?
Okay.
Any other comments?
I would feel better if it was coming, a request of this design was coming from you, Economic Development, or Urban Renewal, or, you know, so... And I guess I could say that from the next hour. But I'm, I think it's played out its role, which was a pilot. It chose to extend it to four years instead of two. And perhaps that wasn't a wise move. But even looking at this report as given to us, you know, I looked at the mission, promotion, advocacy, education. And even in their report, back to us, it seems like promotion was the only thing that they've talked about. I can't remember any advocacy, and I'm not sure about education. Such words as "a $65 membership fee is a hard sell" tells me there's no way that the businesses in that area have seen any benefit from the activity. Grant writing, one grant write, two, back to the city. Not, none anything outside our own taxing dollars. And highlighting two events. I think it was a nice, nice try, nice measure. You know, if somehow this idea of marrying up with Main Street Oregon, you know, comes through you or through the Economic Development Department of the City, you know, for Citywide, then might, might consider. But I would say, you know, if for some reason, you know, we feel obligated, you know, I'd suggest we take the $28,000 or whatever and divide it by membership and give them each a check back to offset downtime, off-season, operating costs. You know, if we're so concerned, because I don't think this is doing, doing the job that they foresaw. And it was a nice try, though. I mean, it was worth, why we have pilots.
Anyone else have any comments? I have a few. Well, go ahead.
I'm a little at sea on this one, because I'm just trying to see how this fits in. I guess my concern is that if we focus on one section of the city, are we, you know, are we crisscrossing with the Chamber of Commerce and the other areas of the city? And it just gives me pause. I don't really understand how this all fits in to our role.
It's up to me now. I, my comments are this, is that when I was reading through the recommendations, I was, I mostly liked recommendation number two, number four, number five, and I created a number six. And this was all fall, to follow Mr. Anderson's thinking here. This was all falling to me, not necessarily a Bama, as we've known it, approach, but more as an urban renewal type of getting to some certain type of work other than hiring staff to do it and working with a nonprofit to get those things done. And my number six would be, and this broadens it, but to partner with the emergency preparedness because of the door-to-door approach that these other recommendations take. We could add some messaging or some pamphlets or brochures or door stickers or something about emergency preparedness and help the businesses get up to speed with, you know, where is the local place to go during an earthquake? And I'm thinking mostly about the lodging accommodations. But just to stretch this thing out to actually accomplishing more in a broader range of things, I really, I really like the idea of the Main Street Oregon. That was the number five. And the Boots on the Ground Contractor for Economic Development, which I think we really need. And again, and recommendation number two, which is attract development and business recruitment, which we also very much need. So that's the direction I would want to see us go. But is that good feedback for tonight? And then we'll...
I think so, yes.
And then maybe we'll need more discussion.
Yeah, we're not making a motion?
I don't know that we...
It was just discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you all, and hopefully this is helpful. The next agenda item is G7. Economic Development Toolbox, Discussion of Tools and Incentives/Criteria. And Jody's back.
Thank you, Chair Hinton. So I know we're a little bit short on time. We're happy to put this on the next agenda. For now, though, I think these are really big questions. And I think it's actually good that we can just basically introduce the questions and then give you some time to think about it. And then we can circle back and re-ask them with hopefully having some good conversation discussion. Jody, do you want to go through the questions?
So Urban Renewal has received an inquiry for assistance with RIPRAP or Shoreline Stabilization. And the question posed is, could this be included in any urban renewal tools? And if so, in which program would that fit in? And then also thinking about, could Urban Renewal provide loan forgiveness or grants? And if so, for how much? And in what circumstances will the agency be willing to grant that? And then question C. Will Urban Renewal Agency increase loan interest rates to accommodate administrative program costs? And then moving on to the question about grants. What criteria should the agency consider for grants? Would that be jobs created or retained? And if so, what types of jobs? How local? Would there be a tax increase? And then what kind of incentives would the agency be looking for if a grant is approved?
Okay, because we're short on time, I'm going to jump in here. And I want to separate these out, the RIPRAP, because you have an application now or inquiry about that. I'd just like to first take that one and ask the city attorney if he can help us. I remember years ago that the RIPRAP was not an approved purpose, thank you, whatever the, it wasn't approved by the state. And I don't know what the current...
Off the head, I can't tell either.
Okay, so we're, we need to answer that question first because I don't know the appropriateness of it. And so I wouldn't feel comfortable with asking the members to vote on that until we know that. And...
I guess, and I agree with you. It was a question, I was trying to figure out where we, Urban Renewal map touches shoreline.
Taft, Cutler City.
So just along Highway 101 there? Does it come all the way down 51st?
It does, yeah. So there are three places in the city where the urban renewal boundary goes west to the ocean. That's in Cutler City, all of Cutler City is included. Taft 51st, and then in Ocean Lake, actually, four, Nell Scott is included, and 15th Street down to the beach access. So in those cases, you know, we don't have a lot of people who would be making an inquiry. It could be that with the Infrastructure Partners Tool, maybe what we could do is wait until we get to that Infrastructure Partners Tool discussion, that we could decide if shoreline stabilization should be included in that or not. I don't know if we're going to start seeing more of these as we have sea level rise and we have storm surge that happens more often. And if that is something that you all think public funds should be able to subsidize through either revolving loan or grant. I think there are some businesses that are facing significant shoreline improvements, or they, their building will be compromised. I know there are some lodging facilities that are in town that aren't in the district, but, that have decided to remove their ground floor hotel units just because it is not, it doesn't pencil for them. It's too much maintenance burden to have something that is taking on water from time to time just with a storm. So I think that that's a good conversation, and we can bring back more information.
I have a suggestion that we actually hold a work session to cover both the Bama conversation, because I think there's more there that we need to talk about. And also your economic toolbox that we're just discussing now. I think it's more appropriate in a work session. Mr. Chandler, okay with you? Is that consensus from the agency members?
If it were...
Let me ask one question since we're, the only request I would make on that is we combine it as a URA City Council discussion, so that it can be broad. It can, since we're talking toolboxes for both separate entities, we can broaden it as possible.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay with you for the council?
Yep.
So we're in agreement. It's all right, thank you for that, and thanks for all your good work. This is really fun to get to this stage.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so now we're at the point, with one minute to spare. Any other comments from members before we close? Okay, we are adjourned at 5:59.